Ready when you are. Ready for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the roll call show all who are present, but councilman Whitner, yeah, he had a got called to work and is not in town, so we move move on. We do have a quorum. Like that, open with an opening prayer. Those would like to join with me, please. Lord, we are gathered here today to do the town's business. I hope you give us guidance for that. And I want to ask you especially to think of our our children in particular that are that are ill in our town and give their blessing and and thank very, very much for them and and help them all that you can, dear Lord. Please look out for our children. This I ask you in your name, Jesus, amen. Have a motion to approve the agenda.
Move approve the agenda.
Second.
Been moved by councilman Stettler, second by councilman Harky to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? None being all papers say aye. Aye, pose the same motion passed only affirmative. Any communication from citizens? Anybody online? Nobody online. Consent agenda. Can I motion to approve the the minutes March eleventh twenty twenty five? And the workshop March eleventh twenty twenty five.
Move approve the minutes meeting and workshop on March eleventh twenty twenty five.
It moved by councilman Stettler, second by councilman Harky that we approve the minutes and the workshop minutes of March eleventh twenty twenty five. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye, pose the same motion passed all in the affirmative. Have a motion to approve the bills March twelfth through March twenty fifth twenty twenty five.
Move approve the bills March twelfth through March twenty fifth twenty twenty five.
Been moved by councilman Stettler, we approve the bills March twelfth twenty twenty five through March twenty fifth twenty twenty five, and I have a second.
Second.
Then second by councilman Nordean. Discussion.
I have a question on on yours. I would check number two, three, four, two, zero. On this economic development.
What's the point of what? I don't have that paperwork in front of me, so. So what what's your question where?
I just have a question that you've got one every day to a different count on that.
It's I travel where I need to travel to do to do business, Tammy.
But economical development, what are you doing in Riverton?
I am talking with potential could be land purchasers or investors or
None of that can be done.
And real estate.
That none of that can be done on the phone?
Lot of that needs to be done in person.
So why can't they come here? If it's land purchases here? That's what I was.
Uh, my realtor is in was in Riverton. We needed to meet with him there. I've met with different people in Riverton. They set up a meeting. We're we're selling. I've been to travel to Casper to meet with the the dockers and stuff down there.
That one I understand. It's just these other ones I don't is that we have a realtor that doesn't even come over here to do with the land he's selling here. You have to go to him?
I do at times go to him. Depends on scheduling.
Does he ever come over here?
He has been here at times. Depends on scheduling.
I just think it's a lot of travel.
I don't particularly like wearing out my truck either.
Just asking.
Anything else?
No.
There was one on the twenty second fifteen fourteen. Well, I had to go down to Casper. That was really not planned. That's what we needed to do. We're working on trying to trying to put that together. I'm trying to put put together uh, munitions. We have a munitions company interested in moving here. Working on that. I met them and discussed with them in Riverton.
Why aren't any of those guys coming to us in council?
They shouldn't be.
They shouldn't be?
They should not be. Actually, they should 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 not be. When we get if we have a project and offer like I brought last time, I brought it to the council where we had sort of something together. If I have definitely have something where I have a firm author or something, then I will bring that to the council for guidance. But right now we're discussing, you don't. So.
All right.
Okay.
Can I ask Tammy on your question? On the economic development part? Are you asking more for more of a description? Who did you meet with?
Yeah.
Okay.
And he did say who he met with.
Yeah.
So we'll just have to make sure that's written down. Okay.
I just think a lot more can be done over here and not on the road.
You're not doing it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? None, none. All papers say aye. Aye, pose the same.
Aye.
Motion passed three to one, councilman woman. Harky voted nay. Nothing on public carrying. Nobody online. We have nothing scheduled. Correct?
Nope.
Or nets? Parents's uh, citizen, public presentations, none. Building permit, crossroads, RV.
You missed proclamation.
Oh, where did I? That's what I was looking for.
It's number twelve.
I don't have I didn't know the sheet I'm looking at.
You're on the wrong one.
Okay. Okay.
You were on the right one.
Yeah. I thought I was too, so I don't know what happened. That's what I was. I was just going to sit in front of me. That's what I was.
Oh, you were in the minutes section.
Oh, okay, we hadn't got. I was just looking at you.
You're just too far now.
You're good. Keep going.
Right here.
One more page right there.
Okay. That's what I that's what I was looking for, that proclamation. I didn't see it. So we have a uh, pro proclamation Madison Day. You you want to read that chief?
Uh, yeah, uh, just a little bit before that, uh, um, you know, cancer is one of those things that seems to affect and impact almost every family at some point somewhere along the line. I'm speaking right into the mic. Um, but it, uh, it's one of those things that it's especially hard when it's affects someone so young. And in this case, this, you know, little girl, Madison, when I first met about, I think it's seven months ago. Um, and she was just a remind me a lot of my my own daughter, you know, and it's personal to me in that regard, but she was just so sweet and then and just to see, you know, what she's been through um, was compelling to me that, you know, I I spoke with the mayor, obviously, and uh, wanting to do a proclamation as well as the family. And I just think that honoring that aspect of thing is kind of what led to this proclamation, but it's honoring all victims, childhood victims of of this terrible uh, disease and I thought it was a very meaningful in in the small town that we um, acknowledge that and come together and pay sp- special attention to that and and those that are affected by that. So, um. So unfortunately, uh, she she wasn't able to be here today. Um, but her her family, uh, her grandfather and her grandmother and and her aunt, sorry, I knew those two. I wasn't sure. You know, sister, aunt, nephew, who knows? Um, are here today. Um, so I'll I'll on behalf of the mayor, I'll be happy to read the proclamation. Uh, whereas the community of Shoshone, Wyoming is deeply touched by the resilience and courage of Madison Friday, a young cancer survivor. And whereas Madison Friday's journey has been an inspiration to our community, displaying the strength in the face of adversity, has been a testament to the perseverance of the human spirit. And whereas Madison Friday's story reminds us of the importance of hope, compassion, and unwavering support for children facing cancer and serves as an inspiration to all, demonstrating the power of hope. And whereas we recognize the importance of supporting families facing childhood cancer and we celebrate the victories of those who have faced this disease. And whereas we recognize and celebrate Madison Friday's courage and the triumph of the human spirit. And now there now therefore be it proclaimed, the town of Shoshone, Wyoming recognizes June eighth and every year thereafter thereafter is designated as Madison's Day as a day to honor Madison Friday and all the young cancer survivors and to reaffirm our commitment to supporting families affected by childhood cancer and to celebrate the triumph of hope and resilience in the face of childhood cancer. In witness thereof, set upon the mayor's hand, seal of Shoshone this day, March twenty fifth twenty twenty five.
I would just like to add, this is really heartfelt from all of the all the governing body and and employees of the town of Shoshone. It's just so sad, but also shame. You see, she's fought fighting and fought so hard and it's 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 rough. I just really don't know. Don't have the right words, but it's that she's in our prayers. Thank you for coming. Now we'll move on to permits. Uh, building permit for the One River Church.
Where's that one at? With the steeple?
Am I on the right page here? Yeah, I am.
Page twenty one.
The white one?
Page twenty one. Page twenty one.
Page twenty one?
On the packet.
Is it the white church?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's page twenty one of your packet.
It's the Wind River Church. She used to be the Presbyterian Church.
I was trying to figure out which church.
A little over nine years ago, they had a pretty awesome wedding there. I'm just saying. Really good cake at the reception.
Firsthand knowledge.
Firsthand knowledge. Carrot cake with cream cheese sauce.
All the building had on. Sunday school room.
Move approve the permit.
I'll second it.
And move by councilman Stettler, second by councilman Harky that we issued the building permit for the Wind River Church. Any further discussion?
My contractor have to be licensed with the town of Shoshone or no?
Yes, the business license.
Business license.
That's what I mean.
Yes.
Do they have one?
I don't have that answer. I can.
They're doing volunteer labor. How does that play?
Oh, so they're not.
They're not even a contractor then.
They're not even a contractor. They're just knowledgeable volunteers. Okay.
Right. Any other questions?
They can be pretty petty to man a business license for non-business actions.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same. Motion passed only affirmative. Consumption permit to Tara Sears.
For a birthday party April fifth from nine to nine AM to twelve, oh, twelve AM. Where's it said?
It's still midnight.
Okay. Wine coolers, champagne wine. Twenty plus people.
And where are they having it?
Did you say when?
Where?
Where?
Yeah, I was looking on here.
Well, she has other authorized parks, so I'm assuming is it going to be at the Town Plaza or one of the parks? Not on April fifth.
Yeah.
That was June.
Yeah, I would say it's about to be the.
Is that what this is for? Okay, so as for a birthday party that they're going to celebrate at the Town Plaza, they have it reserved. Uh, I I have some concerns over the uh, nature of the Uh I I have some concerns over the uh um nature of the. The party in a public arena meant for public uh public to go to when it's sexual in nature. Um this party has been advertised as a um play on the on the birthday of a sixty ninth birthday. Use your imagination with sexual uh implications of that. Um I have concerns about that being done in a public place, it's meant for the public to be able to utilize. As they go by on our main strip, things of that nature, I don't think would be appropriate. Um so if this is approved, um it needs to be approved, I believe, um under our existing town ordinances. That prohibit that type of behavior in public.
That's pretty should be. You would think that, but the the advertisement I heard about was not.
Lewd, lascivious.
Yes.
Type of 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 uh nature, um if they want to have this and this is approved, um it needs to. I believe that that caveat from the council should be included in that because I will definitely enforce that.
And we don't need advertisements on the. On the walkways in public or anything that's any anywhere, anything like that where we can have. Our use of stuff exposed to. To that.
It's. That's just the back context of this. It was a a ad that was actually taken down from Facebook because of its nature.
What I would suggest. If we approve it, it's with under the guidance restrictions that the that the chief. Police had this conversation with the organizer and the chief is comfortable. That the that this would party would be all under the guidelines. That follows city ordinances and and our and our and our chief of police is, I trust his. His judgment on on this.
And yeah, I mean my, I don't have an issue with with this being approved um at. At the Town Plaza necessarily, I mean, we've had other places, we have consumed alcohol there at other events. Granted, this is a birthday party, um if it's strictly to a birthday party, that is within the um I'll just say the. The common uh values, mores of the community and the ethics that we expect to be done in public, then I don't have a problem with it.
And I. No, and so I would I'd be okay with the privilege under under those guidelines. And then that the chief has just laid out and if he's not, I believe that the chief is not comfortable. After meeting with the organizer. And explain like this, then. Then we don't issue.
But or if it's issue that if it's that I can revoke it.
Yes. I mean, it's just uh.
That's only caveats I'm asking.
I think that's reasonable.
I do too.
Does the the uh town ordinance have anything about that? That's what I'm trying to read up on.
Yeah.
I mean, we can put those conditions on a permit period, whether there's an ordinance or not.
Yeah.
I agree, but I was curious at what, I'm trying to look up the ordinance.
Yeah, I'll pull it up real.
If you tell me what book.
Lewd.
It's the word.
It falls under basically disorderly conduct.
That be a nuisance?
Well, it's actually under disorderly conduct in the ordinance. I'll quote, give me one second.
I'm just curious, like I said, I know.
No, it's it's good. Oh, 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 under what title? Yeah, nuisances, I think it. I see you're saying that, sorry.
I've got the the town code up, I just.
Yeah, it's not a nuisance, I think it's under offenses, miscellaneous. Uh one would be nudity in public. Kind of goes without saying that one, uh breach of the peace. Uh any person who shall disturb the peace of others by loud or unusual noise or who shall disturb others by violent, tumultuous, or offensive conduct.
Offensive conduct, okay.
Or who or who shall or utter any unseen, profane, obscene, abusive, or offensive language, or who shall or utter any language. Tending to calculate or provoke a breach of the peace or permit the conduct in house, building, or premises in this town occupied, owned, or possessed. Is guilty of a misdemeanor or breach of peace, that's that's just one of the orders, I can, there's other ones I can quote, but that that's. Kind of the guise of what I'm requesting on this issuance, whether it should be approved. That it's very clear, concise from the council that this is good, yeah.
So how would you like the motion to read?
Something to the fact that um that it's issued under the. Of good. What's the word? The conduct there would be. In good taste for general public consumption, something to that effect, that that it won't stray outside of that, and if it shall, that it will be revoked. The chief can then, chief of police can then revoke this.
We approved the. Permit. Uh with the condition that if any disorderly conduct or any other. Town ordinances are violated, the chief police has a the authority to revoke the permit on site. And, I guess, and that their that the recipient of the permit is reminded. Of the town ordinances of decency. Upon.
If I was just wondering if the chief police wasn't comfortable after discussing with the with the. The event planner, putting it on, that they can't come to an agreement, they didn't enough to issue the permit.
That that works too.
You you what I mean, I I trust the chiefs have a conversation and explain what's expected. And if for some reason that the so it's so don't involve in law enforcement action later on.
Right, that's. I just wanted. And become some kind of controversial thing, trying to prevent that from the onset, so that. That would, all that 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 in that motion, I guess if you refine that to include all that, I think that would satisfy everything that I need to move.
Right, and and we'll leave it up to your judgment if they if you came to that agreement, you think it's gonna hold and then.
The council also need to put in the motion requesting that you would then speak to the organizer.
I would say prior to issuance. And then upon issuance that those things that uh councilman Statler set out would be adhered to. If not, it would be revoked, even if they say they're gonna do it, and then I find out they didn't do it, then I can just revoke it, right? That works for me.
Look to amend the motion to state that the uh. Chief police. It had been seconded by the town, will be uh my my under my understanding, the motion to prove prove this permit. Uh with the following conditions that the that the chief of police will talk. Have a discussion with the the. The person, the applicant is putting on this birthday party and and discuss. What is it probably allowed, not allowed to follow the mo- the the moral. Guide.
Conduct.
Conduct of the town of Shoshone, yeah. If that agreement. That's made. That satisfies our chief of police that those those guidelines will be followed, he will issue the permit. If he is not so satisfied, he will not issue the permit.
And it can be revoked.
And it can be revoked.
Due to misconduct.
Due to misconduct.
That's what I tried to say, thank you for cleaning that up.
So it's been moved and seconded, that that's what this motion is. Any further discussion?
And maybe that was, I don't know, maybe that's just gonna be a good clean birthday party, never know.
Well, I I hope it is.
I don't know the applicant, but.
Me too.
I okay, I hope it's a, I hope it's a good, clean, fun time.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, both the same, motion passed on affirmative, good job working that out.
That's like the most complicated motion on a permit I've ever heard in all times.
I I have hopes it's gonna be a good.
This is one of those weird situations where I.
And then again, it tracks back to Facebook too, don't believe everything you read on there, but.
Believe that post.
Yeah.
I didn't see it, unfortunately.
It was printed off for me to see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had it printed off.
Yeah. Okay, next on the line, the DaVinci Sign Systems proposal. Okay, what this is is we're expecting to.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor, but I need to say this real quick, since the clerk left. Um the cost of this, if we get it done this budget year, we would have a meeting with the mayor, the clerk. The police department and to redirect, reprogram money from all departments to pay for this, this budget year. For the cost of this, the money is available to pay for this, if it's done through the mayor in the existing budget, we can do that. Take it away.
Okay, yeah, this isn't something we're asking, this isn't something. To approve, this is really probably should have could have could have, should have been. Also could have been down around table, but this is. One sign company's proposal, and we're anticipating a couple of.
What is this for?
The signage on the town on town hall.
Oh.
If you go down, they got some. Administration, library, police department, there's some mockup photos.
So this is one of several proposals.
It was, we're anticipating two others.
Okay, so this is just a.
Yeah, this is just letting you know, there's no, not asking to vote on anything.
Okay.
In our agreement with them, the. The architect agreed to do all the architectural work and arrange for everything uh for. For some other mistakes or something they did to sort of make it up to us.
Good.
So so they.
Make things right.
Makes things right, they had one sign company already back, that that backed out, they have two more, the. I think it was a sign company that that may have did some of the work with Fast, and it was a local sign company that that's no longer in business, I guess. So. But they're anticipating a couple others and and it, we can hit these options around when we get together to and stuff like. They're just sort of let you know what we're doing. For. Information, that's all this is. And it's uh Kim's work, been working tirelessly on this, she's been like a, been like a hound dog. Chasing down the ark, cause we should have had this several months ago, we thought. Was our right, yeah?
Yes, in fact, and I'm I'm bummed that I missed a call from Jared today because I was. Slumped with pick between payroll, one of them, order in.
I missed one from him also.
And so I'm not sure what he had. Would say, but I will get with him tomorrow on it.
Yeah.
But yeah, it is something that we'll be able to.
Yes.
Together from um just pulling from different departments to.
Sure.
Get that money together.
If we decide to do it this fiscal year.
Yes.
It'd be nice to do it this fiscal year.
Yes, because we've been here almost two years, so.
Yeah.
That, who knows what money's gonna look like in a few months.
Yeah, with the grass and.
Okay, it's. Be nice to have this. Yeah, would be, so.
Okay.
So that, so MOU for fire protection. Okay, well, I had uh Marshall review this. They originally sent one, Marshall suggested some changes, the fire district made the changes Marshall suggested. And so this is, this should. Like I said, I had Marshall review it, this should be good, it's it's just uh we haven't renewed that for a while, and that's. Our our agreement with, because we, the fire district. They they take care of our over fire equipment, you know, the fire hole, we have volunteer fire month, but all the equipment belongs to Fremont County. They provide all the equipment, and that that that's agreement, we provide the building, and so that. And they explain how how the light bill and water bills take care of and all that stuff is in this agreement and. In. Sort of a side note, they moved on said possibly within five years. They're looking at, I think I mentioned for uh potentially new fire hole and Shoshone is next on the list. So but but who knows how taxes are going up, you know, there's a lot of things, but. We're on the list, they would really love to get the fire hall away off the highway. Off the bit of the highway, so. But anyway, so this is, that's what that agreement's for. It's basically following that, the same thing, we just added uh a clause in there basically that where they. They hold this harmless if there's some injury that wasn't in there, that was not in there before, we held them harmless. If there was an injury, but that was reciprocate to like the tariffs. So what's good for them is good for us, and Marshall caught that and and had us change that, so. So I got my, I'm asking for permission to sign that. Just let you know what we're doing, if you see anything you don't like or anything, but I intend to sign that, I just wanna bring you guys up to speed.
Basically, just says everything that's been going on.
Yes, other than in one addition that Marshall added, which is gives the town more protection.
Wouldn't it really need a motion on that or no?
It would, it would.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Been moved by Councilman Harkey, seconded by Councilman Norden, any further discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both the same, motion passed on affirmative. Did Chris get called out for some? So we may not have a, be still a working officer twenty four seven. So we'll we'll move on down, if he gets back and wants to add anything. We we can, I I don't have anything, I don't know what he was gonna report on.
Save this report.
And I just.
And I don't have a copy.
One thing I say, I think our PD is doing really well, I think our new officer we hired was uh really a good steal. I mean, she. I think it's fitting in real well, what I see, and she brings in a load of talent and experience. I think it's uh talking with the mayor, DuBois, DuBois tried to hire her to be their chief of police. And the mayor DuBois, Mayor Pat said that she's not divestly, one of the best county officers they've ever had in DuBois. Really, really impressed, so. We, I think Sh- Shoshone was very fortunate to to hire her. Other than that, we'll move on, uh. Do you have anything you'd like to add, Jake? And.
I have a problem, which I don't know who the guy is, he's the one putting the tires in front of his house. Have you seen all that? He's got some like tore up couches and that stuff is going all over behind um the old Phillies and cream and. I mean, it's horrible, yeah, by Stacy's house, I mean, I wouldn't want to have to clean that up.
Behind Phillies and cream.
Yeah, the guy is putting in the tires.
Uh so, uh I'm actually uh gonna have the public works go out and measure our town right away, and we have the discretion to allow what goes on, what doesn't go on town right away. Um and then um once that determination is made, then you'll receive a thirty day cleanup letter, um if he doesn't follow that, then he'll be issued a citation.
Is this the old Metcalf property?
It's the one over by me at the end of Third Street.
It's got the big um solar panel like it's.
He has like old broken solar panels that line his trailer.
I'll have to look, okay, it's a trailer, so I didn't.
Yeah, it's at the very end of Third Street where it connects with. Where that street is.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, because he's building like an um garage or something, I know too.
Something down.
It's no building permit, I assume.
Nope, so.
But but anyway, yeah.
So that 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 is being addressed, but it's going through the the proper procedures to address it. So.
Okay.
It just makes the town look really bad following garbage.
So. Uh si- similar to what we did with the that trailer, and that's another issue that's gonna come back up uh through the courts, where we're probably, the town's probably. Gonna have to pay to have that trailer removed.
Say the property looks good though.
The property's looking better, but the trailer's still illegally placed and needs to move.
Right.
And they've been warned, they've been put on notice, they went to court, they were ordered to remove it, haven't done it. So we're we're still dealing with that, but yes, the property, so the process does work, it just unfortunately, it's not a a quick process.
Right. And we're and we're doing the legal process and. And we're and we're doing the legal process and what needs to be done, so. Did, would you like to talk anymore about the PD?
Uh, well, uh, just to create the council, so we're we're completely fully staffed. Uh, um. Smith, Officer Smith, the six foot six guy that. Drives a black truck.
Long arm of the law.
Yes, he's, he's very lanky. I say he looks like a coat rack. Um, so he's completed his uh, his initial task force. Uh, so he's hired, so what? His position is funded by the. A grant. Um, for the specific purpose of being a task force officer and investigator. So he is now available to also do patrol, so he'll do, be able to fill our gaps in patrol. Um, and he'll still be working as a task force, which I can't really go get into in this setting. Um, you know, we can always have an executive session where I can go into more explicit detail on that. Um, but his main, his main job is to serve as our investigator, where he's not doing that. Type work of that type day or whatever, he'll be on patrol, so he'll, he has that, so our part time, we won't, he. Facilitates that gap that we were using part time to help. So we are one hundred percent staffed, plus. He's available to fill that part time role. If that makes sense. So that's why on our budget, that's why the part time was dropped down, because it's not really. Gonna be something that we're gonna really use on a day to day base, weekly basis anymore. And if it does crop up, I'll be able to utilize other funds to pay for it here and there as needed. So.
Mark. Like this.
So just quick little brief update on A two A, we are still meeting on Fridays, we'll meet again this Friday. And um, it this is a Zoom call. So you'll be very pleased with that. Nobody's going anywhere. But it's uh, actually, it's a. The Google, not Zoom, but.
Yeah.
Google thing. Yeah, and um, which works really well. So anyway, it um, you know, we continue to have discussions. We do have the roadblock system trying to get all the documentation in. That's still going on, and it's a long process. The thing you sent me um, today, um, I wasn't able to open it. So I'm I'm sorry, I say it was a bid.
Oh, yeah, that if you open that, that was a phishing scam.
Yeah.
I didn't send that to you.
That was, it stayed from his email. And it was sent out to everyone in his contact list, so if you open that, you need to get with your antivirus software and run a scan and get that Trojan or whatever removed as soon as possible. I hope you did do it on your work computer, C W C.
I did, so.
Oh, my God. Unfortunately, it happens, um, but you might want to alert the I T to that.
Get it open.
But. Yeah, that's that phishing scam, and that's it. So probably you might want to send emails out to your group that they received an email asking to solicit anything, ignore that.
I know the good.
Yeah, I I got it from Fremont County Fire District. It came in from Ron. Wimpin', you know, the director, I thought, and we're working on a deal on the new fire hose. I thought it had something to do with that.
It made all sense, because we've been working on.
Yeah.
Things and stuff and. So it meant it was.
And he said he got it, he believes, from the mayor of Hudson.
Okay.
Isn't it significant that you do that?
But I know the ma- the mayor, Madville Coleman, governor, the council, councilman from Sheridan. Almost every one of my contacts, I almost everyone, I think, with the state of Wyoming Park Service.
So I have nothing to do except I crash the system and see that and see, so. Okay, so I I I've done.
Okay. Didn't want to talk about roadblocks and myself, okay, the pretty railcar uh, the system. Uh. They have worked out an agreement. I don't exactly what the agreement is. They've worked out an agreement with ID Inc. And and with uh, B D W. Uh. They, if everything goes good, they host the maybe the open for business by the first of the year.
I see they've got some more different training there now.
Yeah. So but that's, I got a call last Thursday when I was in Casper, that anyway, that the. They had. That was the. The papers were getting signed. So that's, that's good. We're still. Uh, with the Wyoming Car- Cardio Palomary, we're still working through that uh. I hope high interest rates don't scale the project. So but anyway, they're 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 we're working on, working on that uh. Uh. On trying to, on a funding mechanism. Uh, so actively seeking to do that, less less than the last, what's, what's going on there, so. Yeah, it's uh, I've had, I can say I had some good conversation uh, Saturday with the Secretary of State. Uh, about about that and one of our state representatives. Pepper Otman would be specifically. But anyway, we. That's uh. Very, this could be very beneficial for our area, central Wyoming, not just Shishone, but well, Fremont County. Uh, Hot Springs, Waskey County, be a good thing, as we've mentioned before, we're still working on it. Uh. Town cleanup days. Uh. We have. I have that in front of me, that. That uh, poster. The town cleanup days and burn days.
April first is the beginning of burn days.
Okay, April first.
They're in your pocket. Good for you.
Okay, I'm looking.
Do you have it, Tim?
I've seen.
Okay.
Okay, I was just making sure I had the right date.
Yeah, the.
It's sideways.
Count cleanups may fifth through the eleven.
Are we helping anybody that needs help? Because I know they've done that before, had stuff put outside the fence, and then people went around and kind of helped load that.
Um, we we offer that to those that are disabled.
Right.
Um, but the problem that Buddy had, they brought up was that people that aren't disabled just threw their crap out there, expected us to pick it up.
Right.
So we, if you're disabled and you're unable, you need help, then yes, we will help.
They need to contact town hall and set set up an appointment, say.
I know, I was just getting mine outside the fence and Buddy and them all picked it up.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's it's a case by case basis, I guess. We just don't want people to say, just throw all the crap out there, they expect the town to pick everything up. Versus if you have a legitimate need or, you know.
Some people just don't have trucks.
Exactly. If you need help, you know, call us and and we'll we'll come out, so yes, but it's something we. Case by case.
Right, okay.
But it is awful. I think it's a good question.
Okay.
But if we have a, I think. And the advertisement Mike outlined exactly what we'd accept and not accept, we're not accepting tires and that sort of thing.
May fifth through the eleventh at town hall or at the maintenance yard. And he adds all this stuff, and we'll keep posting it out there, make sure that it's. The flyers get to everybody.
Yeah, no garbage. That's, yeah, so, no, this is. No refrigerators, hazardous material, chemicals. City ta- citizens, as she's showing, she's showing home. And you're a citizen, as you're showing, since you're on the council, aren't you?
I mean, because I live in.
Allegedly, yes.
You do actually live here.
Also the sheriff's department determined, yeah.
Many of any of that, so. Uh. I did have the honor, I was asked to speak at the Lois Herbs. Uh, recognition in Lander. So I I did go to that. It was started off with the governor. About a four or five minute or three minute, whatever it was, some, you know, uh, talking about Lois and. And stuff like that, uh. Pepper Ottman, Representative Pepper Ottman was there, Representative Lloyd Larson was there, Senator Kale Case was there. Uh, Secretary of State, Jeff Gray was there. Uh. The Superintendent of Schools, she also sent a video. Uh, but it was, you know, fairly well, fairly well, very very well attended from she's people from Shishone. Uh, I think there's eight or nine servers. I'm get fifty to sixty people, all in all, shoulder for that and. Uh, I didn't see no county commissioners. Uh, but anyway, it was, it was, you know, she was the only. Female that's ever been elected to the Wyoming Stock Doors Association. She was the first and the only. Uh. Yeah, so yeah, Senator Loomis also had a representative there and and so did uh, Senator Senator, yeah. And Senator Senator Loomis and Senator Barassel also had a representative there to speak. But it was, she's lived quite a life. And uh, was very, very active. So anyway, that was, I was honored to get, I was honored to be asked to to do that. So I did, uh, there's probably ten things I'm forgetting, but I think it's time to. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Oh.
I I have, just one thing, this will be really quick. Um, so Councilman Whitner sent me a list of things that he wanted to address and question. Um, at the council meeting, um, I did, it's a list of nineteen items. Uh, I pretty much told him that twelve of those items, um, we're not gonna, we've we're not gonna beat a dead horse and beat the horse and then pour gasoline on and light it on fire. If they have information, they can look at the mayor's letters, they can look at our council meetings, and everything's explained.
Who asked this?
Random citizens to Councilman Whitner that he wasn't able to present.
Okay.
So a lot of the stuff is is things like, what do we do with the forty acres? You know, things of that nature.
Okay, correct.
Which I think we can handle it, and what I did tell Jordan is is uh, that I would, as the grant coordinator, I will provide a quarterly update on our grants and what. What's being done, where we're standing on those things. That'll answer most of these questions that are being asked. Every month and just to keep the town informed. So I think that's more of the gist. Some people just maybe don't watch all the council meetings and they just, you know, question things. Um, the the one big one that um, he brought up was about the senior center, and I said, it's not really the town, it's its own entity. Um, however, it's uh. That there's complaints, I guess, that it's not open when it's supposed to be open, and it's. Well, closing and I said, that's not, I don't know, but he wanted to bring that up, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that is really, we have nothing to do with that, honestly.
That's what I told him, but he.
But we, it's uh. I guess, and they're not, they're not just a Sunday close.
Yeah, it's closed that on the weekends when it's not supposed to be closed, it's closed early when it's supposed to be open.
Sick people.
So I I don't know the answer to that, but he just wanted me to let the council know that was going on, that he's being questioned by citizens about it and.
You know, I asked the question why they closed on Sunday, and he said it was staffing.
And it's, but I just want to throw that out there, so that's all I had on Jordan's behalf, so.
Okay, I'll make that motion to adjourn this.
Then move to adjourn. Can I have a second? I can't find one. Oh, I have a second. Uh, Councilman Stettler, any further discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed the same, motion passed, affirmative, eight oh three.